Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, uh, meeting of the Aurora Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe.
Here.
Councilmember Marmelium.
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here. Would you please join me in a thankful moment of reflection? Thank you. And would you please join me in the flag salute?
For God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, under agenda review with the council's blessing, uh, because I'm conflicted out on two of the items this evening, I'd like to move items ten A and ten B to after council communications. Is there any objections to that?
Objection.
Okay, so we.
That was so legal, the way you said that.
Um, then we will, uh, we will go with items ten A and ten B moving to after item twelve. Um, for closed session announcements, we have none this evening. So for item five B, I'll move that all ordinance presented at the meeting shall be read in title only and all further readings be waived.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and that takes us to the good stuff. Item six A, introduction oath of office, uh, commander, excuse, I almost said commander, Chief Culver. Nice to see you, sir, and your department.
Now, uh, um, good evening. I'm Dave Culver. I'm your chief of police, and it's, uh, wonderful to be here tonight. Um, we have a special, um, special thing this evening. So, um, I have the privilege of introducing to all of you, um, Robbie Polito. And, uh, he's a new officer for us, um, here at the department. So, um, Robbie grew up here on the central coast, and he was inspired by his older brother to pursue a career in law enforcement. Serving both in the military and the civilian police departments, he began his life dedicated to public service in two thousand and thirteen, when he enlisted in the US Army, where he served for eight years as a military police officer. During this time, he deployed to Guantanamo Bay in the Middle East, during which he developed his leadership skills. Officer Pluto brings over a decade of law enforcement experience and training to the, our police department. He started his career with the city of Santa Barbara, and he comes to us from the Grover Beach Police Department. He has served as a member of the San Luis Obispo Regional SWAT team, um, various assignments there, and currently is a breacher on the team. He's dedicated to, to applying his tactical expertise and training, his mentoring, guiding of his peers, and serving the community with professionalism and integrity. And he brings all of this to our department and to the community of Aurora Grande. Officer Pluto, I know, is an avid outdoors, uh, individual, uh, enjoys hiking and spending time, uh, um, outside doing things. Uh, I don't think he would last long in a desk position. Um, and, you know, since first, uh, meeting, uh, Officer Pluto, he is somebody who's very easy to get along with, and he, um, really kind of embodies our family environment, uh, with the police department. And I know he's gonna be a wonderful addition, and so, um, we're really happy to have you and, uh, happy to, uh, call you a member of our family now with, uh, the Aurora Grande Police Department, sir.
Sir.
So we're gonna do a, uh, oath of office, if I could, uh, Ms. Matson. And then we'll do a, uh, badge penning, um, and you have somebody who's gonna pin your badge on tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Robbie Polito.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
He didn't know I was gonna do that either.
No, I just, I really wanna say thank you. I'm super excited for this opportunity and, um, coming from just across the street, um, the culture here and, and the way that I've been welcomed in to this family and the department and all officers that showed up today and my family, I couldn't ask for any more, so thank you.
All right, as everyone said, welcome to the family. Uh, that takes us to item six B. This is city manager communications, Mr. Downing.
Well, aloha, mayor and members of the council. Um, I say it every time we have one of those. I love when we do that, and I also hate having to follow it because how, how am I gonna be nearly as interesting or as fun as that? So, welcome to the team, and, uh, I have, I do have some updates for you. Uh, so as we head into the holiday season, the police department will be the lead agency for San Luis Obispo County's Operation Holiday Cheer. Uh, this event will take place on Wednesday, December eighteenth, uh, in here in San Luis Obispo County. We will have over forty law enforcement agencies, uh, from San Bernardino, Riverside, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara counties that will take part. This is the fourth annual, uh, Operation Holiday Cheer. We'll have more than a hundred peace officers who will embark on a four hundred and seventy mile, five mile trek, uh, basically driving by every hospital in each region, um, and spreading holiday cheer and showing appreciation for the doctors, the nurses, the hospital staff, uh, all the professional folks in those areas, um, who work tirelessly through the holidays, even when the rest of us are celebrating, much like our law enforcement folks here tonight. Um, uh, and so our county's agencies, um, so all those from San Luis Obispo County will go through the San Luis Obispo County hospitals and the Santa, Northern Santa Barbara County hospitals. Um, and I do have it on good authority that Santa Claus will be participating as well. So, uh, we did wanna make everybody aware of that. And then, uh, on the other side of our public safety realm, uh, you may have seen a five cities fire authority, uh, conducting a tractor drawn aerial ladder. Now, that's a mouthful, so we call it a tiller. Um, the tiller training around town in the recent weeks, uh, it's a big giant used blue and yellow tiller that we got used from, uh, the city of Santa, city of Ventura, Ventura County, pardon me, uh, Ventura County Fire. Uh, it's very specialized training. You have to have a driver in the back of the rig, um, and this is all in preparation for when we receive the tiller truck that FCFA is purchasing in December of twenty twenty-six slash beginning of twenty-seven, because building fire engines these days is really difficult. So, um, so if you see them out about that is, uh, currently your fire tiller, um, they're doing training, give them a wave and say hi. And then, uh, not on the public safety front, but we do have some exciting late breaking news, uh, out of admin services, and admin services is typically the ones that say, I don't have anything to report this week, but they do this time. Um, the city's budget received the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So that's the GFOA award. Uh, this award is a significant achievement and reflects the commitment of the governing body, that's the council, and the staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. Uh, it's an honor for the county, for the council and staff, showing that our budget serves as, as a number of things, a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Um, so congratulations to the city council and to our admin services team for that, uh, that honor. And then if you're familiar with City Hall, on the other end of City Hall, um, the city clerk team recently launched a refreshed website with a more modern design, uh, easier navigation, and new tools to help residents, businesses, and visitors. We also implemented, uh, enhanced accessibility features, uh, with this website. So, uh, we wanted to make sure that everybody can access the information and actually view, view the information on our website. So, this includes text enlargement, uh, color inversion, colorblind adjustments, uh, and additional readability and navigation options for those who need it. So, that's another awesome thing. Then I'm gonna ask the clerk to put up a PowerPoint slide. I know on your, uh, agenda as item nine D as in David, we have a receive and file piece of information for the council regarding flash vote and the first flash vote survey we did. Um, so the council and the community can go back and, and look at that, but I know I made several pitches during council meetings for asking people to sign up, so I wanted to at least highlight it for you and the community. So, flash vote is an independent third-party survey platform. It's used by local governments, um, to do scientific sampling, um, for the community and, and asking them a bunch of, uh, survey questions with, it basically takes a minute each time we put out a survey, um, and then we get the results in a couple of days, uh, basically twenty-four hours after it closes. Not only that, the, those who take the survey can also go and look, and the general public can look at the results as well. And so what we did with on this first just kind of introductory, uh, survey, we did a five-question flash vote survey on city communications. And so this was deployed, uh, September sixteenth through September eighteenth. We had five hundred and ninety total respondents on that survey. Uh, we have currently almost a thousand people signed up to take our surveys. Uh, I think we're at nine hundred and seventy-something. Nine, what? Nine ninety-six, so literally almost a thousand. Um, and we included a link on there where you can find it, but it's basically flashvote.com/royalgrande. CA, uh, we also have links on our website to make it easier to help find that. Uh-oh. So what did we learn? Uh, the majority of the respondents, so seventy-seven percent of our, uh, city's respondents view our communications performance okay or better. We, we inverted that and said excellent, then good, and then okay, just, you know, a little pat on, uh, the city clerk team back. Um, what we also learned is that the, the public likes emails. They really like emails from us telling them what's going on, specifically on updates regarding infrastructure projects. So I think the, uh, the magnificent work between the clerk's team and our city engineer on the trafficway bridge project and the weekly updates that come out of that, the public has shown that they really like that kind of information. At the same time, we know there's always room for improvement, and so there are a couple of things, maybe there's a list of them in your staff report, but I wanted to highlight a couple. So we're gonna be looking at multi-channel redundancy. So basically what that is, is evaluating how we can do cross-platform promotion. So if we post something on Instagram, can we all, can that cross-post on our Facebook page, our, our formerly Twitter page, um, all the other social media pages we have, can we also send out an email associated with that? So we'll be looking at that. Um, enhance, enhance our segmented opt-in topics. That's a really weird way to say, uh, allow people to sign up for more refined emails through our website. So adding category, pardon me, adding categories, making sure that if they have a particular interest, we can tag all those different mail groups and send out an email, and it, it reaches people where they, where they really want it, which is in their inbox. And then, uh, increasing staff capacity. So we know communication isn't going away, um, but we also know that we, we need to make sure that we're doing it correctly. So providing training on, uh, training or tools to the different departments to prepare communications in more digestible formats. So, uh, graphics, infographics, plain language text, all of that kind of thing. So, uh, we'll continue to look at this. Uh, we've already started on a couple of those items in your, identified in your staff report, and so we'll continue to do that. Um, we did also send out our second, uh, flash vote survey recently on cannabis, because you, the council will, uh, be considering a cannabis item on December ninth, and we got some really good information in that as well. Um, so it, I do wanna make it clear, we got some comments saying, uh, the way this survey is, uh, written, it makes, basically makes it seem as though you've already decided you're gonna do this. Know that the decision has not been made on that, but it was crafted in such a way to where if the council decides to go forward, we know how the residents feel about other topics related to cannabis. So, I'd wanna set everybody's mind at ease on that. So you'll, you'll be hearing about that on, uh, on December the ninth. And this keeps flipping forward really quickly. So how can you stay involved? Um, again, go to flashvote.com/royalgrande. Uh, you can sign up to participate in future, uh, future surveys, and I'd love to hit over a thousand. I'd love to get to twelve hundred. I'd love to get to eighteen thousand four hundred, but, you know, that, that's asking a lot. So, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Let's see if the council has questions. Questions? Questions? I have a couple, and they're related to the flash vote. Would you rather do that during the commentary or questions for items nine, or would you like to do it now?
So we can wait till the item nine.
Okay, wait until item nine then. All right, thank you very much, sir. Uh, this takes us to item seven. This is our city council reports. This is our once monthly report out, uh, on the other committees that we sit upon. Uh, for mine, uh, the audit committee has not met, CJPIA has not met, Five Cities Fire Authority has not met since my last report. The San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting was attended by the Mayor Protem, and the sanitation district, uh, did meet, and I have that open, because there's, um, some good numbers to report here. Uh, what we heard was the, um, the final, uh, report for the redundancy project. So it is done, and I don't wanna say done and dusted, but it's done. Um, it came in, uh, okay, so you, you all are well aware that there was an issue that had nothing to do with the sanitation district. It was a design issue, so it came in, um, way off timing for that reason, but the budget expenditures that were related to the design changes were not the responsibility of the sanitation district. Those are the responsibility of the engineers that designed it. So when, when you take that part out, we came in at over two million dollars under budget. And, um, that was figured, we were able to figure that into our rate study that we did recently, and so that is of benefit ongoing in our rate study to our ratepayers going forward. So that's a fantastic, um, testament to how, uh, staff worked so closely with our project managers, and this was during COVID, when the cost of materials were going up, when the supply chains were disrupted, um, we found workarounds, we found alternates, we found all kinds of ways to work through that, and we barely got into about ten percent of the contingency. So it was really impressive. So the numbers are, the total project expenditures was, uh, roughly, uh, not quite forty-four million. Of that, not quite nine million is subtracted out, because that was the design flaw issue that was paid from the insurance on, uh, from the, um, engineering group. So the total cost paid by our ratepayers were thirty-five million. The original budget was thirty-seven and a half, and unspent budget was two point three million. So, uh, that's a pretty, uh, exciting thing to report out to the community. So I, I would imagine my next few report outs for the sanitation district are gonna be relatively boring. Um, that, uh, are my council reports, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, let's see, so attended, uh, H-SOC meeting. We elected eleven, uh, new board members, and we approved the latest round of provider grants. Um, six, about six point five million will be distributed, and this is for already established programs, not starting anything new. Um, but just, it's a, it's a very concerning going forward, especially in, uh, twenty twenty-seven in terms of how things are gonna get funded, just to give you an example, although six point five million was distributed this year. It, it's actually started ten months ago, and fifteen million was what was, uh, requested by local groups. Um, for the air pollution control district, we also elected several, um, board members. These were the hearing board members, including, uh, medical. And we received the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five toxic hotspots report, um, which is, uh, very crucial to what the board does, um, or what the agency does. It details the most highly monitored air pollution sites in the county and the steps that are taken to reduce, uh, particular output. Um, and if anyone's interested in diving deeper into that, it's, it's online. Um, I also attended on eleven, six, twenty-five, the IWMA training in Tascadero with councilperson, uh, Guthrie, and I learned a lot, not, not having known much about recycling or, uh, solid waste disposal, uh, until, uh, I went to the training. But let me just say, folks, beware. Batteries, and particularly right now marine flares, are so incredibly dangerous if they are, uh, inappropriately disposed in the garbage. I'm just telling, this is apparently, uh, such a big problem that they're worried about being able to continue to get insurance, because basically it starts huge fires and explosions. And there was a tape of a, uh, sanitation worker sorting through, uh, material, and a flare went off. And it's, uh, anyway, it's very dangerous. So, um, I did go to the mayor's meeting, which was great, in, uh, Grover Beach, hosted by Mayor Cassie. She did Friendsgiving, which was cute. And we were joined by, um, California State Senator Lemon, who is also the speaker, uh, is going to be the upcoming speaker, uh, up in Sacramento. So, uh, it was really interesting and heartening to hear, uh, she comes from the central coast, and even though she represents folks all the way down, uh, starting into Southern California, she has a perspective from the central coast, and particularly, uh, that feels like a positive thing in terms of a lot of the housing mandates that come down. She talked a lot about, uh, the, she understands the nuances of housing requirements in the central coast. We have infrastructure requirements or limitations. We have insurance issues, things like that. So, it's, it feels like that can only be a positive thing to have her representing. Um, and then yesterday, I participated in the general plan citizens advisory group regarding the draft of the general plan that's coming out. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Guthrie.
So, um, Central Coast Community Energy has not met since my last report, and I did not attend the REACH seminar, but I, I believe, uh, someone did. So at any rate, IWMA, yeah, I will say that that's the third, uh, summit I've gone to, and I keep thinking they're gonna run out of stuff to talk about, but there's, the, the waste industry is, is, for something that is as narrow as you think it is, they come and pick up your trash, that, it, it, there, there's just a lot going on there. Um, I, I'll report on one where they are actually, this isn't in the South County, but in the North County, the trash holler there has AI that identifies if you're throwing away stuff in the wrong container.
No kidding.
Yeah, it just analyzes, it goes down and writes you a ticket, and they, they actually find you up there um, for, for putting the wrong stuff in the trash. So, it's, and they have, they have it on film that it's your trash can in front of your house, and, you know. I, what happens when you see twelve of them out together like we often do? I, I don't know quite how they handle that, but I, I was struck, because I said, oh, so you guys go ahead and review them, and they said, no, we only review them if, 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 if we get an appeal. So it's, it's AI judge, judge, jury, and executioner. So, um, so we also had an integrated waste management meeting, uh, at that meeting, we, we are happy to announce that we've come to agreement with our new union. Uh, I think there's all of five members. Um, but we do have a, a, a MOD in place with them, uh, which works out for everybody. I, I think it was a pretty good job. I, I think it was a pretty job. We also discussed our, um, we, we've had some issues with the audit. So, uh, the one audit didn't get, didn't get finalized for a year and a half. So from two years ago, that, that was finalized, but there were some questions about why it took so long that we got a report on. And we also got a report that will be all caught up here, I think by the end of January and, and be, be set straight by then. So those are my reports. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Marvilia.
Thank you, mayor. Um, we did not meet for the five cities fire authority. Um, but we did, I, we didn't have a visit Slocum meeting, but there was a Slocum summit on November 13th that I attended. Um, it was kind of an overview of, you know, travel and tourism for both the county and the state that they, they went over for, I think it was a five hour event, um, that day. Learned that tourism had an economic impact of 2.4 billion, up 2.4% from last year. So we actually did see more that came in and 60 million in local tax revenue from the tourism. So it is a significant chunk of revenue that's coming into the county. Um, and is responsible for 23,000 jobs within the county. So it is, it's a good chunk of our economy. The big topic of discussion was inter, international travel being down. Canadian travel was down 22%, um, which is a huge number. And also travel is, the higher income people are still traveling, but lower income people have stopped traveling a bit. So the higher income is really making up most of that money that's coming in is the higher income travel. So we could see that, that the benefits and the negatives of that with like the lower income hotels, um, are probably not seeing as much as some of the higher income ones that were, are in the area. Also talked about the highway one closure and how it's, uh, they said $240 million in lost revenue for the central coast, just from having highway one closed, um, which it's, I think it's been two years now. Councilmember Low probably knows that better than I do, but I, it's a, it's a pretty big economic impact in the area. It was an interesting event, learned a lot. They also talked about autonomous vehicles in the airport, um, which sounds fun, I guess. I'm not sure if I'm ready to do a waymo, but, um, they, they're talking about that as solutions for like getting people from the airport to various parts of town and things like that. So moving into the future. Um, I also attended the REACH roundtable for councilmember Guthrie, um, the next day, I believe. Um, it was a great event. Um, it's basically like table discussions with local leaders. Really interesting. Ironically, it was airport was one of the main topics on that one and two, but it was really focusing on Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County airports and how they're becoming, rather than like the travel part, it's really like the economic, um, areas around the airport that are expanding, um, which is really interesting because we're kind of a hub for aero industries. So those are becoming places for those types of industries to kind of, you know, be, I guess. Um, the big challenge that they said is, you know, housing for employees in that, in those particular industries. Uh, the second topic was healthcare. Um, and we had, there was, uh, representatives from Cottage, Dignity and Adventist. Um, and they were talking about just, you know, some of the challenges of healthcare with the, within the counties. It's the three counties that we're kind of talking about, um, Slow, Santa Barbara and Ventura. We are short, as probably anyone knows, PCPs in this area. Um, I guess cottage is expanding up here to try to help alleviate that. Dignity recruited 54 physicians in the last year, which is again, you know, we're, we're getting there. We're chugging along, but we're still down about a hundred, um, PCPs, like I said. And their biggest challenge, shockingly, is housing again for their, um, employees and, um, just trying to get people into the area. It's, it's a huge challenge of trying to get people here. They're, they don't, they can't afford to live. Um, there, they were also really anticipating, uh, some major financial challenges that are, where they're going to be looking at next year, especially because of some of the ACA and Medicaid changes that were in the big beautiful bill. They're anticipating that's going to be really financially hard for them. Looking into the future. So we have some pretty big issues coming up with healthcare. Um, and then the third topic was housing, which I think I covered a little bit. But just looking at, you know, it is a significant challenge for our area and, and, and economic development, development when we can't afford to house people, um, and they can't afford to live here. Even at 150 to 200% of median income, they can't afford to live here. So we've got, we've got issues that we have to take care of, but that it was a, it was a great summit. I met some great people and it was really interesting to hear from everyone. And I think that's it.
All right, great. Uh, and bringing us home, councilmember Lowe.
Thank you, mayor. Slocog did not meet, but Slurda did. Slurda is the San Luis Obispo Regional Transit Agency. And a couple of highlights there, they said their top priority is recruiting, recruiting, uh, bus operators or drivers. And, uh, so any folks interested in, in working, uh, for that organization? They have a great, um, I think a great, uh, climate, um, great supportive environment there. So, uh, bus drivers wanted for San Luis Obispo County and the ridership is, um, now up for the route 10. Ridership has been steady from last year, um, countywide, like all the RTA was pretty steady, but the outlier was route 10. And there's, there's been a, um, about a four and a half percent increase in ridership on, on route 10, even though there was a, that reduction service I talked about from last time. So that was, it's a good sign that, um, people are, um, taking advantage of that, um, service that's provided. The, um, RTA is also moving into the future with what's referred to as a contactless system for fares. This is a statewide effort, uh, that's being, uh, led. And this allows people to board buses with either a, either a bank card or a, some kind of a smart device, like a phone. And it will speed up the boarding process and it also allows pay as you go type fares. Whereas now, if you wanted to say, for example, take advantage of the multi fare discount, you purchase a card, you have to pay upfront. Uh, this allows you to, to pay as you go. So those are, those are, uh, good trends moving, um, in support of transit. And then the county water resources, resource advisory committee did not meet, but the zone three water advisory board, water advisory, zone three advisory committee did meet. They, um, they review the status of, of various projects that they're working on. They also talked about the, uh, status of the flows and the, um, uh, and the status of the lake. The, the amount of water that we're getting there, obviously, uh, talking about the, the rainfall. One little factoid I thought was really interesting was, uh, it's been really nice to have that rain. A season, um, total to date up there has been about seven inches. And they said, when they get up to about nine inches on the season is when they really start to see the runoff. So I think the current lake level is in the 80% range. And, uh, when we get to nine inches up there, I'm going to say when, hopefully we will later this year. Those, you'll start to see the, the lake levels come up, um, you know, at a higher rate. Also, uh, they had a, an information item on their budget. That's kind of connected to one of the items on our agenda later. They're making budget adjustments, um, in addition for some of the things that include, um, uh, legal fees. And then lastly, um, Brian Tally, who's been a longtime member of the, um, zone three advisory committee. He's, uh, the AG representative. He's stepping down. He's been on the, um, advisory committee for, he said, almost 30 years. So he's been a very committed, uh, member of, of the group. He's been very proud of the work that the advisory committee had done. And then, um, the committee endorsed Byron Tally, he's keeping it in the family, uh, to take his place. After he is, uh, appointed by the board of supervisors. So we all wanted to, uh, thank Brian for his, um, many years of, of faithful service. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. That concludes item seven. So now we're moving on to item eight. Item eight is community comments. This is your chance to come talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your, uh, comments to one minute or less and address the council as one body. So if you'd like to, uh, speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda, please come forward at this time. And seeing no one here, we'll check in and see if there's anyone online. Oh, okay. Well, come on up.
Push which button. It's, um, my name's Donna Evenson. I live on Corbett Canyon Road outside the city limits. The issue I have is the curb on Gallardi Road and Corbett Canyon. It sticks out in the road and I've hit it and two tires went in alignment. And, um, I noticed it's been hit a number of times and someone even took a spray can and painted it red again. It's a safety hazard. Uh, why I hit it, I knew it was there, but right before dusk, commuter traffic speeding on the yellow line or over the line. And my reaction was to scoot over. Well, I just hit the edge and both tires went, which cost me probably a grand between tires and alignment. Anyway, uh, for the record.
Thank you. Um, let, is there anyone else who would like to speak in chambers? And I'm going to ask staff to respond to you in just a few moments. Okay. As soon as we're done with public comment.
Good evening, everyone. So I have happy things to say. I was talking to Carrie. So I enjoyed the summer concerts, which the volume was a little bit higher, but that's okay. And also the nine 11 concert that was up at Rancho Grande, that was very nice. And so was the harvest festival. I know I'm not supposed to single you out, but anyway. And then also I'd like to recognize that, um, Mr. Butch, who was, I believe, the first city manager. I could be wrong. Um, I used to wait on him and his wife and another couple. And that I thought he should be recognized by the city. And that's it. Thank you. That was thanks to Carrie Downey.
Thank you. All right. And let's check in with the city clerk to see if there's anyone online who would like to speak on items, uh, not on tonight's agenda.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
There are no raised hands. All right. So we'll close public comment and I'll ask either the manager or the assistant city manager, sorry, city manager or assistant city manager. That's the third time now, I think, in the last month or so that we've received commentary about Gallardi at Corbett Canyon. Can you, do you, first of all, I present, obviously you're aware of it and I'm not going to ask you the question that you're not. Is there any plans about doing anything with that?
Well, um, I, I'm aware of one, uh, claims come in and, and an email, but, um, the measurement of the road is, um, it meets our engineering standards. The, the claim that I'm aware of is someone that was riding a bike in the middle of the road and someone had to swerve. I'm not totally aware of, um, uh, the commenter's, uh, situation, but, uh, we'll take a look at it again. It is off of the roadway. It's, um, something we could take a look at to see if, um, there's something that we can do or make, uh, an adjustment to the curb.
So, um, since I live right by there and we walk by it, I think that it's made up of black, uh, pavement.
Yes.
Is there any way possibly to make it reflective or more visible? I, I feel like that's, that's the issue. People don't see it. I don't know. Just an idea.
Sure. We can, we can paint it with a different color. Uh, we can try to shorten it. There's a few things that we're going to take a look at. So yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to our consent agenda now. This is items collectively nine A through nine H. So, uh, I do have questions about nine D, I think it was. Yes. The flash vote nine D. Is there anyone else who would like to either ask questions or pull something for separate consideration?
No, thank you.
All right. So then I'll, uh, just ask my questions about nine D. About ninety. Okay. Sounds good. Mr. Downing, uh, D for Downing. Um, so I went through the flash vote results and played around with being able to, um, I've forgotten what the right word is. What's it called when you disaggregate the disaggregated data? And I noticed that there's a significant difference between districts one and two and districts three and four for how they want to be communicated with. Uh, I'm sure you recognize that as well, but the majority said that they wanted email, like more email. That was a very clear direction. So you mentioned in your commentary, uh, in the, in the city manager's report that, um, you were working on some things. So I guess I'm asking you to expand on how are we directly responding to what the citizens said to us really clearly, uh, about email communications? And then can, not conversely, but sort of, again, disaggregating that, um, there was social media commentary and districts three and four relying on that more than email. So it really does seem to be a preference. Can you just kind of address that a little bit more fully?
Sure. So yes, there, uh, there's all these numbers of filters that you can go in and change things and kind of look at all the different data. And it is super interesting and it, there is a link in the staff report. So anybody who's at home, uh, yeah, have, have fun, uh, because it, it's super interesting. So going back to the, like I said, across the board, everybody wanted emails more than anything. But as you said, there were, there were some specific niches, uh, and we even found one of the things, we found word of mouth is still a very popular thing. So.
In that dang place next door.
So, and, and those are, that's a, a blessing and a curse because then it's how do we, how do we break through some of the misinformation, disinformation that's out there to reinforce what the real story is or what's going on. And so one of the things that we had talked about on our website, we have the notify me, uh, feature. And so adding categories to that, that more specifically align with the topics that people are interested in. And then that way, when we, like, let's say we put out a, a release on, hey, we're opening the trafficway bridge. Not happening yet. Will happen by the end of the year. I, but when, when that type of thing happens, we can actually click into multiple categories in order to make sure that those email lists all get that information. Doing some of the cross, uh, the cross platform, uh, tie together. So, um, for those districts that prefer social media, they can see when we post something on Instagram, we'll also hopefully cross post to X or also known as Twitter, uh, can also cross post to, uh, Facebook, to Blue Sky, which is an, another thing that's out there. And so trying to do that to where we actually hit everybody at once and we don't have to just post it here or post it there. And, and anybody who gets their information from anywhere can, um, can do that. And so we're, we've already started doing the cross posting. Um, so we're hoping that that actually works as well. There's other things in there, what, what I mentioned earlier, or just some of the highlights that I pulled out of the staff report this afternoon. But even things like, uh, how do we make sure that we're actually hitting the mark and actually getting to people? So one of the things that we got out of that was surveying them again, surveying the public again, some point down the road to say, hey, we've made some improvements. What do you, what do you folks think about it now? So we'll continue to look at that. And if anybody has any ideas, we're always here to listen.
Thank you. And councilmember Guthrie also has questions.
I, I really just had one. I'm sorry I didn't get to it yesterday in our meeting, but there were two, 229 other respondents. What, what, what were other respondents? Are these people who just heard about it and wanted to comment? Are they citizens? Are they just random?
So others are depending on which filter you're in. So there's one filter that's locals only. And so that's somebody who has signed up with a verified Oreo Grande address. Others in that instance would be those who are not signed up with an Oreo Grande ad- address. As an interesting aside, when we were making the push for this first survey, it was right about the time that the council had the tennis versus pickleball discussion. We noticed a lot of signups outside of the city limits around that same time. And so they all got that first survey. Several of those, because doing all the filters, several of those folks actually said our communication's poor because they live in a different town and don't hear from us. So, uh, some of the information you have to take with a grain of salt. But yes, depending on the filter, the other can be somebody who lives outside the city or anything like that.
And I'll, I'll follow that. So going forward, so let's say something like the cannabis, uh, item, are we going to report out anybody that, anybody that commented? Or are we going to break it down to locals only?
So I'm, I'm open to feedback on that. We tend to focus on locals. So those with verified addresses because. We tend to focus on locals, so those with verified addresses, because who knows where the person is actually responding from. However, that's still, all of it's still good information. That's why we're linking it in your staff report. So if you are interested in going in and playing with the filters, you can. But there's so many endless scenarios that you can run and, and look at it, that it becomes kind of information overloaded at a certain point. So trying to digest it for the council in order to be able to make a decision, that's what we're trying to do the most of.
Yeah. I guess I'll say for, for my preference, I, I think I'd, I would always want to, I can see with the communication thing, cause we communicate with a lot of people outside of the city about a lot of stuff, but on, 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 on the things that, that we're, I'm going to say we're actually going to legislate on, I, I would prefer those reported out. The primary report is locals. Cause you know, a third of your report is from somewhere else in, in this particular instance. Thank you.
Did you see the nods across the whole desk?
Yes, I, I almost noted that for the record, but yes.
All right. Any other questions that maybe came up afterwards? All right. Then we'll go ahead and open up public comment. If you'd like to comment on items nine A through nine H, now's your chance to do that.
Gary Schmidt from Sunrise Terrace. I'm not here to try to persuade you to vote yes on the resolution nine H or nine G, that is. I am here though, to express thanks on behalf of the Sunrise Terrace community for your empathy, your patience with us as we have been here many times to comment on our concerns about that cell tower. I wanted to give a special shout out to council member Mayor Viglia, who listened to 31 of us almost two years ago and was bold enough to deny, to lead the, the planning commission to deny that application. I also want to say a special thanks to Brian Pedrati, who has been very responsive to so many of our emails about the information that is the questions that we've had about the project. And I want to publicly thank St. John's Lutheran Church for stepping forward and welcoming that tower on their site. This is a win-win for everyone. Verizon got a tower. Our community got potentially better services. Of course, Sunrise Terrace didn't have to put up with it. And lastly, what was the third one? Yeah, I had another one to acknowledge. Yeah. The, the money for the income goes to an agency, the church which serves, services so many of the needs of people in our community. So thank you to all, and we're happy and relieved. If you, if you had been outside listening carefully, you would have heard the collective sigh of relief that went up when we all heard that this had been, uh, applied, that they had applied to withdraw their application. So thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to comment on items nine A through nine H? All right. Let's, uh, check in online and see if there's anyone who'd like to comment there.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Sorry, I was being distracted by screams outside. Thanks, chief. Um, okay. Thank you, everyone. All right. So that takes us forward to our public hearings as a reminder, and for those who maybe perhaps were not, oh, let's try again. Uh, well, okay. So let's bring this back to the council for a comment. Sorry, I told you the screaming was taking me out. Um, would the council like to take action, make a motion on items nine A through nine H?
I'm of approval of items nine A through nine H.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
I apologize. I thought I knew who the second was. Who was our motion maker?
Oh, okay. I switched you. Thank you.
Um, okay. Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes. Uh, thank you very much for your patience with me. Uh, items 10A and 10B have been moved to after item 12. So we will proceed right now with item 10C. This is amendments to title eight and 15 of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standard Code and Uniform Code. It says Mr. Pedrati, and I see him at the podium. Mr. Pedrati, nice to see you there and, and very nice to start your meeting with kudos from the, uh, from the community. And I would just like to say your patience with, uh, our constituents as they were very, very upset over many, many months, um, I'm sure this whole council has noticed. Thank you for that.
Yes, indeed. It was, they were very great to work with and, um, very communicative and it was, it was a good experience. So, uh, good evening, Mayor Ray Russel and council members. Uh, Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. Uh, this is the second hearing for the ordinance amendments, two titles eight and 15 of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code. And this is to adopt by reference, the 2025 California Building Standard Code and Uni- and Uniform Code. Uh, these are updated every three years as a mandate from the state. And on October 28th, 2025, the city council held the first hearing to introduce the ordinance and it is now ready for adoption. So staff is recommending that the city council adopt the 2025 building code and find that it is exempt from SEQA as described in the staff report recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, let's see if the council has questions. Any questions?
Chief, this kind of follow up from my question from last time, since we have the fire chief here, I wonder if we could hear a comment on the, the requirement for the 200 feet for the hammerhead turnaround in the project.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so a few things with the local amendment, amendments within the municipal code is section 503 of the fire code gives some minimum criteria for access roads. Um, however, it's a tool for local jurisdictions to use. Um, in the case where there may be instances where, um, the fire code doesn't specifically address things. And most specific to that is with driveways. And so one of the things that with some of our adoptions on driveway standards in particulars to some of the turn, turn, turn routes and hammerheads is it's actually less restrictive because really the fire code only specifically addresses fire access roads, which require a minimum, uh, width of 20 feet, uh, wide, uh, maximum length of 150 feet. And within the fire code, there are also turnaround standards within those, those criterias. So when we look at the local, uh, proposals within the code adoption, it's actually less restrictive than what's in the state either requires or doesn't address at all.
So they understand. So basically the, the hammerhead turnaround becomes less restrictive because you can have a narrower driveway. I mean,
Correct. And longer driveways.
And, and longer driveways.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, chief. Uh, then we'll go ahead and open up public comment on item 10C. Does anyone have comments to make on item 10C this evening? I'd seen no one in chambers. Again, we'll check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you. So I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for either comments or, um, council action. Would anyone like to make comments or make a motion?
Do, do we have a resolution to read or do I have to look it up? Or can we just approve 10A? Or, I'm sorry, 10C. I'm going to adopt ordinance, amending provision of title eight and 15 of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code, California Code Regulations Title 24, including the 2025 California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Electric Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Fire Code, California Residential Mechanical Code, California Plumbing, California Fire, California Residential, California Energy, California Green Building Standards, Wildland Interface Code and the Uniform Code of Standards, Abatement of Dangerous Buildings and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code. All those others were 2025. And, and 97, oh, and 1997 Uniform Code and find it all. Find that it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the proposed, am I doing all right here? All right. The proposed action may be, may have significant adverse impact on the environment. So that it, there is no SEQA requirement. I think that's it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second under discussion. I'll thank council member Guthrie for persevering through those two, uh, action items. Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protam Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes. All right. That takes us again to item 10D. This is the introduction of an ordinance granting to Philip 66 Pipeline LLC, a pipeline franchise agreement. And I will turn it over to our assistant city manager and public works director, Mr. Robison.
Thank you, mayor and council members. So this is the introduction of an ordinance, um, granting a franchise agreement to Philip 66 for, uh, pipeline segments within our, uh, city limits. Here's a quick aerial photo that shows the locations. They are in red. Um, the blue line is, is outlining our city limits, uh, to the, uh, west. And then you see North Oak Park, uh, segment, uh, East Grand segment, and then a segment going north to south on South Halcyon. In your staff report, uh, figure two shows, uh, a larger, more general, uh, graphic that shows the, um, network of piping that goes through our county, which we're, which we're a part of. Um, the procedure of adoption, I just want to remind, uh, the council and the public that, uh, the public utilities code requires a three-phase process. Uh, the first phase or the first step was completed on October 28th. And that was the intention to grant the franchise agreement. And second step is today. Uh, that's the introduction again of the ordinance. And this, uh, step is, one of the main goals is to allow the public to provide, uh, feedback and have a formal, um, opportunity to provide objections. And the third step, if the council acts to introduce the ordinance today, uh, the ordinance will return for the final step of adoption on December 9th. Uh, some, uh, pipeline information points, just a little bit of history really quickly. In 1999, that was the first granting of the franchise agreement for a term of 10 years. In 2009, uh, the franchise was reissued and, uh, for a term of 15 years. And then in 2024, um, Philip 66 requested an extension and the franchise, uh, for a franchise agreement for 15 years. And we're still going through that process. This is the current one now. And, um, that essentially, um, takes us out to 20, uh, 240. If that was, if this franchise agreement was approved. So at our last meeting, uh, we got, we, we received feedback from the council on a few concerning, or points of concern. And, uh, one was integrity and materials of the pipeline occurrences or signs of leaks in the past. And, uh, we started to work with the office of the state fire marshal and pipeline safety division, that's OSFM. And, um, we started to work with them on, um, getting feedback on information on their testing and inspection reports. And they let us know and sent us, um, a, the latest report, which is from 2024. It was done in, um, August, November, uh, August, October, November of, uh, 2024. And it showed certification with the compliance of federal and state, um, laws governing the maintenance and operation of the pipeline. We also requested, um, further back reports for 10 years, for the last 10 years, uh, to show kind of a trend of the performance of the pipeline. Uh, we have not received that yet. We go through the same process as the public. It's a Public Information Act request. And, um, they have let us know that we'll receive this information, uh, on December 5th. So when we get that in, we will, uh, make sure that that information of, um, any issues in the past inspection records is, is brought forward and put into the staff report. Some more pipeline inspection data. Uh, there was a feedback from the council on the coordination, uh, process if there's a leak or rupture. And in that case, uh, there's a bunch of state agencies that come together in response and, um, with our own city. But, um, OSFM, the, the office of state fire marshal comes back into play, uh, California Department of Fish and Game, Office of, of spill prevention response and, um, if applicable, uh, the California, uh, Water Resources Board. So they all come together. We work with them, uh, to encapsulate the spill, deal with environmental issues and start to get a, a plan or a strategy of how to remediate. So, um, there was also, uh, some feedback from the council about systems in place to detect leaks or ruptures. So we started digging in, dig into that information with Philip 66 and with, uh, OSFM. And, um, we had, uh, feedback from them on real-time transient model, uh, a real-time transient model, which is a computational pipeline monitoring system. It's a software system that, uh, continuously monitors the system. It uses, uh, flow and pressure and temperature sensors. And, uh, the model identifies discrepancies that, uh, could, um, identify leak, uh, if those, um, if that information comes back and there's, uh, issues or discrepancies in that, in the data. So, uh, they let us know that, and through research, uh, we were able to, identify that this type of model is, um, able to detect small to large leaks. So it's very, um, sensitive, uh, in the way that it, uh, um, monitors the pipeline system. So some more, um, uh, multi-layered, um, alarm systems and SCADA is one of them. We use SCADA on all of our systems, our, especially our sewer systems. And, uh, it's a continuous sensor model that, uh, tracks real-time pipeline data. And, um, there's predefined limits about how much, um, fluid can flow, flow through the pipelines. And, um, then there's, uh, emergency response alarms that are triggered, uh, if high or low pressures are identified as well. Um, and, and in the same area, flow alarms as well. Yeah. So, uh, detects leaks or ruptures quickly and, um, one just went off today in our, uh, office. We get them, uh, they go off when we do flushing of, uh, systems. So, um, we're very familiar with that. And then, uh, you, Philip 66 is also utility member of the underground service alert. I'm not sure if you ever, uh, needed to call in, uh, USA because you're going to dig, uh, but we do it all the time. Public Works does it, uh, frequently, uh, throughout the months. And, um, it's a California law that requires excavators, uh, to contact the service and the service then notifies utility companies like PG&E, AT&amp;T, um, and Philip 66, um, uh, to, about the, uh, excavation plan. And then the utility comes out and marks the location of the buried lines. And, uh, we've also had, uh, excavation projects in the right of way, uh, that, um, are near Philip 66 lines. And we have noticed that they do a little bit more just in comparison to AT&amp;T and PG&E. They have an onsite representative that comes out, comes out from Philip 66 and monitors the excavation work until it's complete. Um, there's some protective terms in the franchise agreement itself that are, um, in your staff report. Uh, and I'm just going to go over a couple of them, but, um, they're on page six of your staff report. So they're listed throughout that. Uh, but the, the first one is there's a $2 million bond in favor of the city in addition to the insurance covers, coverage that is required under the agreement. So that kicks in if there's some kind of incident that occurs. And then there's also a requirement that the grantee repair at its own expense any damage resulting from its operations. So if there's some kind of, uh, incident, uh, that term also applies to, um, So if there's some kind of incident, that term also applies to strategies and plans that remediate a site from leaks or some type of safety issue. So the next steps are, once again, if your council wants to move forward and introduce the ordinance, then we will come back on December 9th with some more information about the past inspections. And then we'll finish up the third and final step, if that's your council's preference. So the recommendation is long. I won't read the whole thing, but it is the introduction. The recommendation is to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of Aurora Grande granting Phillips 66 a franchise agreement to construct, operate, and maintain a pipeline within the city limits. Complete this public hearing today and pursuant to the Public Utilities Code requirements, and then find that the adoption under SEQA is not a project. So that concludes my my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. See if there are questions. I'll first look to my left.
I of course have questions. Thank you, first of all, for I know this was a lot of my questions that you're answering. And thank you for doing all this work, learning more about these pipelines under our city. I really do appreciate it. I know as of right now, there's nothing in them. They're not running it since 2023. My concern is if they start running, if Phillips 66 starts decides to start back up, which I think could be a possibility when we're looking at what's happening in terms of oil delivery and what might be happening on the California coast right now. Can we be notified that they're going to start running? And if they are going to start running, is there anything that we could add to this agreement in terms of like yearly safety reports or something that we can receive, just to know what's going on?
I think the short answer is yes. We can work with Phillips 66 on those terms. The on the reporting, the Office of the State Fire Marshal has a set protocol. I'm not sure if they're willing to change that. I don't think that they are, but we can speak with them about that. One thing I didn't say is there are a few staff members from Phillips 66 that can answer questions. But if we if we'd like to change the terms a little bit in the franchise agreement to require them to notify us if the pipeline segments are re-energized, for lack of a better term, we can ask them that and incorporate that into the into the franchise agreement.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question about that. Would that delay this hearing tonight if we were to do that?
I don't think so. I'm looking at Isaac, but I think we still have time to incorporate that, but Isaac might can support that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as Mr. Robison mentioned, we do have members of Phillips 66 on the line. We could certainly ask if they're amenable to a term that talks a little bit more about sort of notification. I did want to note for the council, the agreement does require currently that should the city request data or documents from Phillips, they are obligated to provide that information to the city within 10 days or they're subject to liquidated damages of $250 a day. So to the extent there is movement from the federal government or changes in state law, that's something the city would track certainly proactively and can request data and documents proactively under the franchise agreement so that the city could track those sort of issues.
Thank you. That's incredibly helpful.
All right, then we will go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item 10D? I'm seeing no one in chambers. Let's check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close close public comment, bring this back to the council. So again, I'll look to my left since this was Councilmember Marvilia's concern. I'll let her kick this off.
I I'm I'm okay with moving forward with it with the the question that I asked, if that is possible, especially knowing that they also do have to respond to us if we request so in 10 days. It it does worry me just knowing that it's there and it's covering such a big part of our city. But I think this agreement does protect us in a way if anything does occur rather than having to deal with alternative. I'm still not loving it, but I'll leave it at that.
Let's um, let's see if we can ask Phillips to respond to that while they're on the line.
Okay, Renee Flores and David Argayo, you're both promoted to talk and let me know if anyone else needs to be promoted. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, council. This is Renee Flores. I'm the Operations Manager for Midstream Operations here in California for Phillips 66. And to your questions, as far as information, if these lines were going to start back up, again, all information will go through through proper protocols with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. And any information regarding the line and anything as far as startup, you know, we'll go through them. It's public information, right? So just like the records that that you're requesting here in December, it would all go through that.
I think her question was more with regard to changing the agreement to just put a line in there that if you're going to re-energize it, that you notify the city.
Yes, again, it's it goes it'll be a notification to the State Fire Marshal, and it wouldn't be an issue to notify the city again. Again, the lines, it's currently being marketed right now too. So any any changes to the line, the notification will go to the franchisee as well.
To the to our Phillips folks on Zoom, I think the question from the City Council for purposes of potential direction tonight is whether Phillips would consent to added language in the franchise agreement that the city would be notified should the pipeline be activated for transportation purposes. So we'd be seeking Phillips's consent that we would negotiate and add a provision to that effect.
Yes, no, no, no problem there.
All right, thank you. Let's see, any question, excuse me, comments on this side? Okay, Mayor Protem?
No.
The only one I'd like to say is this was not on my radar in terms of being overly concerned about it. But I just want to thank Councilmember Marvilia's due diligence. So thank you for doing that. So if anyone would, and my questions were certainly answered before, but they have been answered in abundance now. Councilmember Marvilia, since you wanted to make the change, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I will motion to, let me see if I can find the right thing. Adopt the appro, wait. Introduce an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora Grande Granting to Phillips 66 LLC A Pipeline Franchise Agreement to Construct, Operate, and Maintain Pipeline for the Transport of Oil and Other Specified Material in the City of Aurora Grande with the addition of what we had discussed, as well as find that this adoption is not subject to SEQA.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, can we please get a roll call?
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes.
That takes us to item 11A. This is appropriate water enterprise funds and authorize an interfund loan from the General Fund to the Water Enterprise Fund. And Director Valentine has emerged from behind the secret door. And I will turn it over to City Manager Downing, whose mic is hot right now. So all right.
Yes, speaking, Mayor and Council. Before Director Valentine dives into the item, I did want to help explain where this item is coming from and coming to the council. So as the council does know, and the public may or may not know, the County of San Luis Obispo is currently in litigation regarding their operation of Lopez Dam and alleged impact to Steelhead Trout in the Aurora Grande Creek. While the city has an advisory role in the operations of the dam through Zone 3, the council and staff ultimately are not in a decision-making position regarding the dam. That being said, we are incurring costs associated with this litigation as the county is transmitting these costs based on water allocation. And with the city at 50.55% of the water allocation out of Lopez Dam, we are we're receiving bills for that. And we are trying to start telling the public this story about what the situation is with that litigation because we're finding people still do not know. We've been including language in your monthly water supply demand reports about the litigation. We've included articles in the Aurora Grande Gazette. Any we've we've spoken all of Zone 3, that being Aurora Grande, Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, Oceano, and Avila. Any meeting that we're in and we're making presentations, we generally will bring it up and let folks know what's going on. So we're trying to get the word out. But this is the first time that the council is actually being requested to take an action regarding this matter. So staff will continue coordinating with the county and working on efforts to minimize costs to the city and its ratepayers. But it's it's taking a lot of work and taking a lot of time. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Valentine to walk us through this item for the council's action this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Nicole Valentine, the Director of Administrative Services, and I will be providing a presentation to appropriate water enterprise funds and authorize an interfund loan from the General Fund to the Water Enterprise Fund. The Utility Division plays a critical role in maintaining a safe, reliable, and compliant water system. Responsibilities include water treatment and delivery, system maintenance, and ongoing replacement of aging infrastructure to meet state standards. The Division must also remain fully staffed with certified professionals capable of operating a complex water system. As water quality standards continue to evolve, a strong capital program is necessary to ensure timely upgrades and system replacements. Periodic water rate studies are required due to changing regulations and system aging. These studies evaluate the true cost of service and identify capital and operational needs. Rate adjustments help ensure continued financial stability of the water system. The most recent rate study was adopted in 2022, establishing water and wastewater rates through 2026, with the final increase scheduled for January 1st, 2026. An environmental lawsuit affecting Lopez Lake has also created significant operational impacts. Last year, several organizations filed suit against the county, asserting that the existing downstream release schedule did not adequately protect endangered Steelhead Trout. I got I got ahead of myself on my next slide, sorry. Lopez Lake predates the Federal Endangered Species Act, and the county has been operating under an interim release schedule while developing a habitat conservation plan. This plan will ultimately guide dam operations to balance habitat protection and water supply reliability. In January 2025, a federal court issued a preliminary injunction increasing downstream releases from approximately 2 million gallons per day to more than 5 million gallons per day. Although the injection injunction does not affect Aurora Grande Day's entitlement to water, it raises concerns about the long-term sustainability of Lopez Lake, the community's most reliable water source. In 2024, Lopez Lake supplied 97% of the city's water. Any long-term operational changes therefore carry substantial implications. Zone 3 has incurred significant unbudgeted costs associated with the environmental litigation. In September, Zone 3 reported that 123% of its fiscal year 2425 budget had been expended. Based on year-end balances, a true-up bill was calculated. And on November 1st, the city received the fiscal year 2425 Zone 3 contract water billing for $1,426,491.50. This represents a substantial unplanned obligation for the Water Enterprise Fund. Staff evaluated multiple options to address this cost without imposing an immediate rate increase. An interfund loan is the most practical way to meet the current obligation while maintaining operational stability. However, additional true-up bills may occur in the future years, depending on Zone 3 expenses, meaning this option addresses the immediate impact but not long-term cost trends. This brings us back to the importance of the upcoming rate study, which will provide long-range financial planning to prepare for future operational needs, capital requirements, and potential additional true-up bills. The objective is to maintain a proactive financial strategy that supports system sustainability and protects the ratepayers. Now that we've covered the background, the next section will review the five financing options that for addressing the fiscal year 2425 true-up bill. As mentioned earlier, the city's portion of the fiscal year 2425 Zone 3 contract water billing was received on November 1st totaling $1.43 million. Staff reviewed all financing mechanisms and evaluated five options for addressing this obligation. First is raising water rates. Rates are set through a formal Proposition 218 process and must reflect the true cost of providing safe, reliable water. Rate increases come with strong transparency requirements and a mandatory public hearing. The pros here are this is a transparent, this is a transparent process. The rates would more accurately reflect what it costs to deliver water. The cons are that the process takes time, it's expensive to conduct a rate study in 218 noticing, and the large rate increases can be difficult for the public to absorb, even when fully justified. A rate increase could be part of the long-term solution, but it doesn't help us meet this immediate obligation. The second option is using an interfund loan from the General Fund. This means temporarily borrowing city money with interest and then paying it back over time. The loan would not reduce the General Fund permanently. It would be fully repaid on the schedule set by this council. The benefit here is that it's flexible, it's low-cost, and avoids issuing external debt. It lets the city address the true-up bill quickly without immediately raising water rates. The main drawbacks are that the General Fund reserves temporarily decrease and future rider revenues, including a potential rate increase, are needed to repay this loan. It does reduce flexibility until repayment repayment is complete. If the council chooses this option, staff recommends using the Measure 006 Sales Tax Fund. This fund currently has enough cash to support the loan of this size without delaying or impacting any approved capital improvement projects. The third option is taking out a bank loan. This provides immediate access to cash and spreads repayments over many years. It can help move major projects forward, but it does increase long-term debt and interest costs and would require water rate increases to repay the loan. This option is viable, but it is more expensive and more restrictive than the interfund loan option. The fourth option is issuing general obligation or GO bonds. GO bonds require two-thirds voter approval because repayment comes from a new property tax. They have low interest rates and are great for capital projects, but they take nine to 12 months to put on a ballot. Therefore, this option is not suitable for this current need. The fifth option is lease revenue bonds. These do not require voter approval, and they're relatively flexible and quick to issue. However, they require the city to encumber a building or facility, and they also require an ongoing revenue source, like a water rate increase, to make the annual debt payments. Lease revenue bonds are more appropriate for capital projects and do not offer an efficient solution for this one-time operational cost. After reviewing the five options, staff recommends an interfund loan from the Measure 006 Sales Tax Fund is the most cost-effective, timely, stable, and flexible solution. The proposed rate, excuse me, the proposed structure includes a 10-year repayment schedule beginning in fiscal year 2930 with interest tied to the life market yield rate. The longer horizon gives staff time to complete the rate study, plan for rate adjustments, and build repayment capacity in the water fund without putting immediate pressure on ratepayers. Thank you.
All right, let's see if the council has questions. Councilmember Lowe, questions?
Not right now.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah, in the report, you noticed that we would begin repaying the, we wouldn't repay this until 2029. We would begin repaying this because the water fund would need time to stabilize. I'm wondering what exactly you meant by that.
With the, there's a scheduled rate increase on January 1st of 2026 of 6.4%. And so that will just continue our regular operations. So whenever we need to move forward with increasing our rates, So whenever we need to move forward with increasing our rates and we can build in the repayment schedule into that. We have capital projects also scheduled in the approved CIP. And so waiting until twenty-nine, thirty was the most logical place to start.
To sort of restate that, then we we need to, we can't repay this until two thousand and twenty-nine because we actually have projects that need to happen between now and then anyway, even if even if we, that will be included in the rate study, but wouldn't wouldn't generate enough funding quick enough to do that and rate pay the.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Maravilla? Absolutely. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this point. We have spent a long time talking about this in meetings. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but they're more for City Manager Downing. I'm going to be very careful with my questions here because this is a legal matter. And so we're kind of, I guess my question is about how we're walking this line between the desperate need we have to communicate with the public and the inability that we have to communicate with the public, given that this is a legal proceeding and we can't say these things. So my two questions are, and I'm gonna let you address them however we can, is do we have a say in how our ratepayers' money is spent and what's our oversight? And the second question is, how do we communicate with ratepayers on this, given the challenge of legal confidentiality requirements?
Sure, and and to add a layer of complexity to that whole thing, reminding the council and the public that we are not a named party in this lawsuit. And and that's been incredibly challenging, too. We've been talking to the county for over a year now about about this issue and how are we going to divvy up these these costs associated not only with the litigation itself, so attorney's fees and and studies and things like that that go into developing the habitat conservation plan. But how are we also going to divvy up and pay for the actual improvements that need to be made to comply with a future approved habitat conservation plan? It's, we've had the conversations with the with the county about, hey, at what point, you know, as our standard budget is, if I begin going over budget on something, we come to the council and say, hey, can we'd like to, for you to appropriate this money to this thing because we need to complete this project. Pardon me. It's a little different in the county. They're a little bit bigger. Their budget's over a billion dollars, I believe, for the first time ever. And so they have different spending thresholds. We have had that question and kind of that that, hey, where are your checks and balances? And and how are we ensuring that that our our ratepayers' interests are are being protected? At the same time, how do we, at fifty point five five percent, that's the majority of our water supply? We use ninety, ninety-seven percent of our water supply last year in two thousand and twenty-four was from Lopez Dam. And that's because the dam was so high and and our, we had a wet winter, and so our our folks were using less water for irrigation, things like that. So we need to be making sure that our our resources are protected as well so that our folks who are paying the rates actually have the ability to turn the tap on and get water out of it. So that continues to be something that keeps me up at night, and so we're looking at that. And then I talked so long, I forgot your second question, so I'm gonna ask you to.
So answering the first one is, we're having very little say in how this money's spent. Okay, that is very frustrating to me, and I knew you already knew that answer to that question. The second question was, how are we communicating with the ratepayers, given that we are so restricted in what we can say?
And that's another, that's another challenging component. And we are working with a consultant now on how how do we message this this issue? How do we message where our water comes from? Why it comes from there, why why we don't have state water like like neighboring jurisdictions do? All those different things, and so and what it takes, as as Director Valentine said, what it takes to actually run a municipal water company and actually provide that safe, reliable drinking water, how much that costs. So we're working on that and trying to come up with a a schedule and a campaign and a program to get that information out to the public in order to ensure they know not only here's what the city is responsible for, but here's what's going on with the litigation as well. This last, I believe, and and City Clerk Mattson can correct me. I believe our last Oro Grande Gazette that we did had a long article in it about the Lopez litigation. I do encourage anybody to go read that and get familiar. You can look up the court docket online. I know that's not the no offense to my attorneys in the room, that's not the most thrilling of reads, but you can find information out there on it as well, and and we'll continue to push the message out as much as we can.
So that begs the question, going back to the flash vote, if it's showing up in the Gazette, but people are asking for email and social media, how are we bridging that gap?
Great question. I think that's something that we can we can look into and and do even more. We do publish those, the gazettes out. We send out emails when those are published. However, to one of the points that I didn't make during the flash vote item, it still requires people to sign up and it still requires them to take some time and I'll say initiative to come to us and say, here's the information that I want and actually sign up for it. But we'll continue to look at that and we'll ask Clerk Mattson if she has anything to add to that as well.
That was a very good summary. We do send out email blasts when we do our newsletter. We also do social media on all platforms. It's a spotlight. It's on our website. It's kind of everywhere. But we'll kind of look at different ways that we can reach those different groups of people.
I guess my point is, are we advertising that the Gazette is out there? Or are we advertising that we have a legal issue? We need you to know about what's going on. We have a water problem. That's what I'm saying. So I know that you're doing a great job pushing out how we communicate. My question is specifically with regard to a headline or a title that will let people know, no, this is, this is a particular item of of critical importance.
Yes, so we are working with our consultant, as City Manager Downing said, and we are actually right now drafting content for a dedicated webpage that will be shared on the website and will be a spotlight that will be dedicated to the Lopez litigation.
And then in that same vein, Mr. Downing, the council has been very cognizant of the legal ramifications of us, you know, talking without having that vetted by our water attorney or whomever. So I would presume that there'll be some sort of FAQs or something there that are the talking points that are consistent across the city that make sure that the council doesn't step too far over the line of what we can and can't say.
Correct, yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions that have arisen?
I just had one question. I guess it's kind of a dual part question. The the true up bill that we got on November first, do you know when that? Like what, up to what point of the legal fees that were incorporated into that bill?
Yeah, it is through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so we'll get another true up bill when?
We'll get another true up bill in November of two thousand and twenty-six.
So it's yearly?
It's, yes, it's yearly.
So that'll be for that entire?
It'll be from July first.
To, okay, so we'll get another one.
Yeah, I I believe we will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that is an important item to note is, as Director Valentine said, this is the first major, major bill that we've received. We've received, over time, we've asked for a little more refinement in terms of our bills of how much we are paying regarding this. This is a major hit, and it's not the only one that we will receive. And so that's why we have so many options and we, even though we're making the recommendation for the interfund loan tonight, I do think it will take a combination of solutions in order to address this long term.
And I forgot my last one that I I wasn't in my notes. What's the reserve gonna be decreased to? Are we gonna dip below that fifteen percent?
We will not, no. There's not a reserve for measure oh oh six, but we will not.
But in terms of the general fund?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, then let's go ahead and open up public comment on item eleven A. Does anyone have comment to make here?
So I do have a couple of questions. So if you're talk, and I know you're not gonna answer. So if you're talking about them coming out of our taxes, the one we voted in for the roads and the stripings on the roads, is that where you're gonna borrow the money from to pay it back? No, and I don't want my water bill to go up, of course, nobody does. And does anybody know the last time we saw any steelhead in the creek? Or by the lake or whatever? Because I assume that's part of.
We'll answer, ask your questions at the end.
Okay, I assume that's part. So that's probably all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
When is this gonna get resolved? The bills will continue. That's it.
All right, anyone else? I'll check in City Clerk and see if there's anyone online that has a question or comment.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, and we've got three questions there. And City Manager Downing has his mic on, so I'll direct them to him. First of all, would this come out of the new tax E twenty-four?
No.
Okay, so that's, and and just piggybacking on that, that's why they're mentioning that it would come out of oh, measure oh. And number two, when's the last time they saw steelhead? That is a loaded question and something that's gonna come out in the litigation, but I'll let you address.
Because of the reason you just said, I will decline to answer that question.
Sorry. And finally, the I don't know, ten to eighty million dollar question is, when is this going to be resolved?
If I had a crystal ball that could tell me that, I would be yeah, in a different position. It, we're, we're, we're talking with, we're working with the county. Again, this is not our litigation, but we are as a, as a kind of a trying to be a team in this whole thing and to address the litigation. The actual litigation itself won't be heard until, I believe, March. That date may change, given the recent federal shutdown, because it is a federal court case. However, right now, we are, the county has appealed a preliminary injunction that was filed about this time last year, actually. And so we're, we're still awaiting a result of that appeal. It's amazing to me how other court systems can have appeals heard so quickly, and we haven't heard this one yet. I don't know, and I really hope it's soon.
Thank you. All right, then let's bring this back to the council for, what's that? Yeah, we did. Yeah. Bring this, so I I did say I was closing public comment, I think, so I'll just say it again officially so that that's done. Let's see, would, Councilmember Guthrie, would you like to kick this one off?
So yeah, I I think this is the the best way, at least in the short run, of resolving this. I do have a couple of fairly specific concerns. The first, as I mentioned, about the not starting repayment until two thousand and twenty-nine. And yeah, I recognize right now it isn't, it isn't a problem because we're kind of behind on our CIPs anyway. But hopefully sometime over the next four years, we'll start catching up. And I I would be stunned if if none of the CIPs we're doing doesn't come in over budget or doesn't come in over budget. I'd be happily stunned, but I would be stunned. The second concern I have is about using the LTF. So the LTF right now is, you know, it's certainly, it's actually ahead of inflation, but historically, the the LTF interest my, the, the, the money that we put in line with, did I use the wrong term?
It's okay. It's LEIF, L A I F. It's a LEIF market rate. It's it's.
It's what the state does.
Yes, yes.
The state provides a very liquid fund that typically is more like one or one and a half percent. It's four and a half percent now. Four and a half percent's great. But historically, it's been behind the inflation rate and particularly behind what I'll call the capital improvement inflation rate. And so I I am very concerned that over time, we will be falling behind, that in fact, that 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 interest rate will not keep up. I don't know if there's a way we could tie it to some sort of inflation rate. I don't want to hold this up tonight because we really do need to, but somewhere in the future, I'd like to see us look, look at using a different rate than that for the payback. So with that, I'll certainly support going forward tonight with it as it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think I heard City Manager Downing take the fifth on behalf of the fish. But all kidding aside, I, and I'm, I'm gonna be polite and probably understated to say I'm dismayed about this. I, the city isn't named in this, but we're in it, we're all in it together with our partners and the county. And it's, it's unfortunate. But then, on the other hand, I really appreciate all the work of the staff and everybody who's working on this to find solutions. Because again, we're, we're all in it together. This is our water resource. It's been there since before the Endangered Species Act, the dam has been. It's been a, a, a great resource. It's been managed well, and we need to keep working through this. So I know it wasn't an easy process to get to this point, and I very much appreciate all of the all of the options. This was an intense effort to look at all of these different options in terms of how this could be paid. It does, you know, one of the take homes, take home messages for me is, as was mentioned, the the long term look ahead. This, this is an extraordinary and unexpected expense that's not unlike that happens to families or businesses when things happen. Things happen that that you don't expect, that you can't control. But it becomes a cost that has to be covered. And I, I think it's something that we just need to look forward to, as City Manager Downing said, over the long term, to have maybe a higher level of resiliency in in our budgeting process, that kind of thing. So it's, it's unfortunate, but we're doing it, and thank you very much. I am absolutely ready to support the recommended action. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, it's Councilmember Maravilla.
Thank you. I second a lot of what has been said. I absolutely support what staff is recommending right now. The whole thing makes me sick to my stomach. I hate that we're in this position. Makes me just, I'm sure my face is bright red right now because it just makes me infuriated. I feel like this is a stopgap and we kind of have to recognize it as that. We're not kicking the can down the road, the road a little, but we're like, we, the focus is gonna have to really be on the long term of this because we're basically duct taping our situation right now. And I hope more people come and hear what's happening and understand what's happening because this is beyond all of our control and infuriating.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Thank you. I second my colleagues' comments all the way around. It's, I mean, it's truly a nightmare, and I appreciate well, first of all, I appreciate all the work the staff has done, and I know everyone's losing sleep. It's a phenomenal number and I very much think the residents need to understand what's going on the the best they can because this, this, it's completely unprecedented. Here we get, you know, ever since I've been elected, the city has received the award for such accurate and ethical and professional budgeting. So this is a team of people that are are very attuned to finances and budgets and things like that. And it's sort of like a meteor, you know, just dropped on us. So I personally, I'm, I'm sure we're all praying, you know, this gets settled or goes away, frankly. But right now, we still have to deal with what we've got. So I agree with staff recommendations, and I appreciate all your work. And I hope, you know, residents are paying attention because we're trying to communicate. Like Councilmember said, it is like a family, like you don't always have good news. Sometimes you do have a extraordinary expense, and we just have to be upfront about it and figure out what to do. Thank you.
That was a great analogy. Well done. No, in terms of the meteor strike.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm gonna be a little more bold than the rest of the council. So first of all, I want to recognize City Manager Downing, who, when, when he says he's been losing sleep, having been in so many meetings with him, including sitting in the meeting with the county, that's putting it way too lightly, the load that City Manager Downing Downing has carried on behalf of this city. And so I want to recognize that. Thank you. I want to recognize previous councils and this council in terms of budgeting that we have always been so conservative in our budgeting and making sure that we had excess reserves of of what our policies require. And that is the reason we are able to have a stopgap, duct tape, whatever the, whatever the analogy is. This city has been well run for a very, very long time, and that's why we can look at the ratepayers. Um, this city has been well-run for a very, very long time, and that's why we can look at the ratepayers and said, all right, we've, we've paid a deposit. But that's all we've done is paid a deposit. I am frustrated, because I've been serving now for over twenty years, and there's only been one other time when I have had to look our ratepayers and our taxpayers in the eye and say, I'm sorry, this is out of my control. The first time was COVID, and all of the, all of the requirements that came down through that, that we had to carry out and had no decision-making over. This is another one, and I am so frustrated, um, at the county's lack of desire to bring our staff to the table to decide how we're gonna spend a Royal Grande taxpayer money. Uh, the Royal, the county is spending it without our oversight, and I am extraordinarily frustrated with that. Um, I hope that the county is listening. I hope the supervisors, all five of them are listening. But I, I think that's a really challenging ethical problem that we have here, that, again, I am saying to the community who's watching right now, I got no control over that. And, and I didn't get into this business, and I haven't run time after time, and I don't give up all this time, so I can look at you and say, I don't know, I, there's nothing I can do here. But that's where we're at right now. And it's so frustrating, and I can't even say any more than I've just said, because then we get ourselves into legal matters. So for the community, please tune in, please pay attention to the communications that we're giving you, and do your best to try and understand where we're all at and what may be coming. And let us pray, manifest, whatever you do, to get a favorable appeal from the appellate court. Hopefully, that will be coming soon. Hopefully, uh, it could be anytime. It could be as soon as tomorrow. It could be months from now. We don't know. Uh, if that comes back in our favor, that will change this, this, uh, calculus. And so let's hope for that. And, um, with that, I am, uh, grateful that the staff has done this level of preparing the council and the city to have the further discussions of what options, of what the rest of the options look like going forward. I'm prepared to, uh, support this tonight. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval. Shall I read the motion? I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the general fund to the Water Enterprise Fund in the amount not to exceed one million four hundred thirty thousand, and to appropriate one million four hundred thirty thousand dollars from Water Enterprise Fund to pay the County of San Luis Obispo flood control zone three contract water billing for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five costs. And to find that the adoption of this resolution is, uh, not subject to SEQA, because it has no impact. Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravilia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russell?
Yes. Uh, as a reminder, we reorganized the agenda to, uh, we're gonna go to item twelve, council communications. That is only so that I can make sure that I hear if the council has communications tonight. Uh, and then we will, uh, go backwards in the agenda, and I'm gonna suggest the council would take, take a quick five-minute break after that, so everyone can use facilities and things. So, um, so we'll go back to items ten A and ten B after a short break after item twelve. So council communications, does anyone have communications this evening? I see your, uh, light.
Yeah, I, um, I, I wanted to, um, mention, I, I guess I missed an opportunity during consent to highlight the general plan. It's been released. And, uh, there's a workshop in early December, and, uh, I hope there's, um, eggnog and Christmas cookies there. I look forward to, I'll bring that, I'll bring it. Um, I hope folks will, um, join us, uh, to look at that, uh, general plan. I think that's really exciting. But mostly, um, I wanted to just take a moment, um, to provide some extra gratitude. We, um, you know, other, uh, this whole, I'd say, uh, a large part of this meeting tonight was filled with a lot of gratitude. And I just want to make sure to thank the staff, uh, the staff that's here and the staff that's not here, for your unwavering dedication to the city and the citizens of the city. Uh, this is an amazing place to live, and I know that, um, having been a, having been a civil servant my whole career, I know how much it takes to make things look smooth, like the duck, you know, on the surface. The duck is gliding on the surface, and underneath, they're paddling away like you don't, you know, you don't know what it takes. And, um, that's, that's the sign of, of true professionals, is they, they make it look easy. Um, but it's a, it's a ton of work. It's complicated. It's complex, and it's not very exciting, really. I mean, the, um, the other thing I wanted to say was thank you to our, um, members of the community, the folks that are here tonight, people online, um, people who pay attention, people who, uh, enjoy the work on the flash vote, um, find ways to get involved, uh, because our community is a better place when people are engaged in, um, in making it better. So just filled with gratitude, uh, here we are, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Um, thank you. So I just wanted to, again, congratulate, uh, the staff for the budget award. I think that's just awesome. And also, the new city website, very cool, looks amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I like the duck analogy. This, we got the good analogies going tonight, but that's a really good one. Um, okay, so, uh, this takes us to items ten A and ten B, and because I'm conflicted out on both of them, I'm gonna announce my conflict on both of them, and then, uh, you'll, you'll, you can continue after I've left the, the room. So for item ten A, that's gonna be amendments to Title sixteen of the Royal Grande Municipal Code regarding urban lot splits and two-unit developments. And the reason that I am conflicted out on that is that has to do with historic resources, and my house has been designated a historic resource for the city of Royal Grande, so I have a direct conflict there. And, uh, as you all know, for item ten B with regard to amendments to Title sixteen regarding accessory dwelling units and junior ADUs, uh, I've had an ongoing, uh, conflict with ADUs, because I have one. So with that, I will step down and wish our whole city, all the, all the people in the audience and our staff members a happy Thanksgiving. And especially to our staff members and to our law enforcement and our first responders at the fire department. Uh, thank you for the sacrifice that you make, so that we can all have a safe and happy holiday throughout the whole season. So a special thank you and happy Thanksgiving to your members. So with that, I will say good night, and we will take a five-minute break, and then we will return with Councilmember Se, or excuse me, to, Mayor Protem Seacrest at the helm.
Uh, call the meeting back to order. Thank you. I mean, call the meeting back to order. Not a question. And I think that, that brings us to item ten A, the amendments to Title sixteen of the Royal Grande Municipal Code regarding urban lot splits and two-unit developments. And I think this is Director Pedrati's gonna, no, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Andrew Perez, today's planning manager, and I'll be, uh, presenting the staff report for this item. Uh, so just a quick reminder, SB nine or Senate Bill nine, uh, was legislation that was signed into law in twenty twenty-one, became effective, um, January first, twenty twenty-two, and requires the city to ministerially approve two types of projects that promote, um, the creation of housing, those being urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments. Uh, later that year, in twenty twenty-two, council adopted ordinance seven sixteen to implement the regulations of SB nine here locally. So last month, a staff brought an item, um, with amendments to the SB nine ordinance, um, in response to Senate Bill four fifty, which became effective this year. However, a few days before our public hearing, the governor signed two additional bills into state law. So the ordinance, for your consideration this evening, uh, responds to three pieces of legislation. Uh, beginning with SB four fifty, uh, this bill amends regulations for both urban lot splits and two-unit developments. Uh, AB ten sixty-one narrows protections for historic resources as it relates to SB nine development. And then finally, SB five forty-three, while mostly focused on ADU development, um, does have some implications and helps clarify the number of units that may be permitted pursuant to SB nine. So beginning with SB four fifty, its most significant impact on us locally is it limits the city's ability to impose design standards on SB nine development if those design standards are not uniformly applicable to the underlying zoning district. Because we don't have any design standards that apply to single-family developments citywide, uh, the proposed amendments do, repeal the existing design standards that currently exist in the ordinance. Moving on to AB ten sixty-one, uh, prior to the passage of this bill, um, parcels that are located in historic district or parcels that contained a historic resource were ineligible for SB nine development. Uh, however, with the passage of AB ten sixty-one, um, those protections of historic resources are narrowed to, where only parcels with a designated historic resource on them are ineligible for SB nine development. So here locally, it really frees up a lot of our single-family parcels within the historic character overlay district, which is generally the village. Um, so it makes all those parcels now eligible for SB nine. And then moving on to, um, unit count, which was, um, we received a lot of public comment and council comment at our last meeting in October. Uh, the passage of the new bill helped, uh, simplify, um, the unit count that's allowed on parcels created through urban lot splits and those without, um, so really to the benefit of staff applicants and developers and anybody interested in SB nine. So for parcels created, uh, through an urban lot split, they're simply limited to two units on each parcel. Um, in this case, a unit can mean any type of dwelling unit, uh, ranging from a primary dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, or junior accessory dwelling unit. Parcels not created through an urban lot split, um, are limited to, and, um, are limited to five units through SB nine developments. However, the configuration may differ slightly depending on the arrangement of the, uh, primary units due to, um, its relationship with ADU law. So for example, if the two primary units are attached, um, then that property is subject to the ADU regulations that apply to multifamily properties. Um, and therefore, multifamily properties are entitled to two detached ADUs and, um, at least one ADU that can be created through the conversion of non-livable space, uh, which is how you get to your five units there. On a property that has detached, um, primary units, um, which are indicated here in those green, um, images, they'd be subject to the ADU regulations for single-family properties, which, as we get into our next. Which, as we get into our next presentation, um, allows for one detached ADU at a maximum of eight, maximum of eight hundred square feet. As well as it permits the conversion of existing livable space to one junior ADU and one, um, essentially attached ADU for your total of your five units. So it really touches on the high points, uh, of the ordinance amendments. Um, in conclusion, staff is recommending that the council introduce an ordinance amending section sixteen twenty dot one eight zero and sixteen point three two point zero six zero of the municipal code. And find that the ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to state guideline sections one five zero six zero and one five zero six one. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, question?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment later, but.
You have questions? Yes.
I have a question. Thank you. Um. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for the graphics. Uh, we mentioned that last time. Uh, so on image two. Could you just describe briefly? I'm sure it's not to scale, but could you describe? So we have two single-family dwellings and one has a converted ADU and the junior ADU. Could you just describe briefly the difference between the two junior ADU and converted ADU?
Certainly. So junior ADUs are. You know, the only way you can create an AD or JADU is through conversion of existing livable space within a single-family residence. Uh, it's capped at five hundred square feet. And it can share sanitation facilities with the primary unit, which makes it unique. It can also have, you know, internal connections with the primary unit. Whereas the ADU that's created through the conversion of livable space has to have independent facilities for, uh, cooking and sanitation. So. And it's also not limited to the five hundred square foot, uh, maximum size that a JADU is. So those are the, the primary distinctions between the two. And I should also note that the converted JADU and converted ADU could be in the same residence, um, if, you know, the configuration permits.
Thank you. Further questions?
Yeah. So, and, and I, I do know they answered these, but I, I kind of want to ask them in order to frame my comment. So. Part of, one of the changes is that we now have to. E- even though you don't have building permits, you, we, we have to process a lot, a SB nine lot split. And since we also have a residency requirement, since we have this lot split, this thing there. It, it seems, it seems likely that they could convey at least one of these lots and maybe both of them. How, how do we attach the residency requirement going forward that, that the state requires?
So in. Just to clarify, in this scenario, it's a vacant lot that's subdivided to create two vacant parcels?
Yes, it's, yeah, an SP nine.
So, you know, practically speaking, we would still require the applicant to submit the owner occupancy affidavit, but in a practical sense, you know, there are no housing units to occupy, so. Yeah. It's. Yeah, it's a situation where the law is written in a way for it might not be practical to apply it, but, um, I think we would be okay with both those lots being sold.
Okay.
Because, because there's no owner occupancy requirement in a practical sense, because there's no units to occupy.
Okay, so nobody would have the residency requirement?
Correct.
Okay. Um, even though the state requires it now? Okay, the second question I, I have, and it relates to the HCD letter that we had to respond to. Let me see, I have three of five of those, if I'm remembering right, basically we're saying our language does comply. My question here is, how, how, since, since we, we're disagreeing with their, their comment that, that, that we didn't comply, when will we find out whether they agree with us? You know, and say, oh, yeah, we made a mistake or, you know, when will we find that out?
Well, the letter the city received from HCU was pertaining to their ADU ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Um, we can certainly address that in the next presentation.
Those are my questions.
Hey, thank you. So then, uh, questions from the audience? Comment, sorry. If any public comment? Thank you, come on up.
Yeah, I have several, um. Comments or questions. And one of them is. So I know it's the law. That I guess, uh, that these buildings are okay to be built, and I know that there's prospect on the village. My question is, is who is benefiting from this? Um, investors, developers? Is it affordable? Is it for affordable living? Um, my other concern is, and I think it's an obvious one, and I, I know I mentioned it last time. It doesn't really match the village. And even though it is the law, I think it would. I don't, I don't see a reason why they would have to build right there in the village. It doesn't match the charm of the village, and I'm from out of town. I'm not from here, but, um. But that's what my question is. And these are, I think, very important questions. Because I don't think it's beneficial long term to the village itself, because that's how tourism that comes here. I mean, it's part of the allure. For outsiders, but that's, that's what I wanted to say. But I want to, I want my questions to be really, really be considered about who's really benefiting from this.
Thank you. We'll ask, uh. City, uh, manager possibly to weigh in. Any other, sorry, any other comments? Madam? Okay, seen, seen none in the audience. Madam, can you check online, please?
Sure, there are no members of the public on Zoom.
Okay, considering that, then, uh, City Manager Downing?
I'll actually defer to, uh, Planning Manager Perez.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know. SB nine is, you know, codified in the state government code. The city doesn't really have an option to not allow SB nine development, whether it be urban lot splits or the two unit developments. Should the city not go forward with adoption of an ordinance, we'd be beholden to the state laws. So it behooves us to adopt an ordinance to retain as much local control as we can, which is what this ordinance does. So who does it benefit? You know, the city gets its regional housing need allocation without every housing cycle. It's the state's intent to generate housing developments, and, um, if we see housing get built, it helps us meet our arena, meet our housing goals, um, and address the housing crisis that exists statewide.
So is it, is it fair to say that the, it's the intent behind it, as far as we understand, is the state is just trying to add housing stock?
Yeah, this is a, a vehicle to see more housing development occur.
Okay, not, okay, thank you.
Especially through the, the ministerial process that, you know, historically, a lot of projects get stuck in discretionary, you know, purgatory where there's, you know, public hearing after public hearing, whereas SB nine makes all those decisions ministerial.
Okay, thank you. And so it's, it's not to say that. Actually, everyone here might not share some of those sentiments that the speaker had, but we don't have any control over this.
For the most part, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, council comments?
Thank you. I just, I, um, I appreciate what it takes again to, uh, put this together. I think, um, it, it's also limited to, so two unit, um, two unit developments. So this isn't really, um, this isn't going to the next level of multifamily per se, right, high density. These, these are lot splits and, and ordinances for how we have, um, a single family, a conversion of single-family units and detached ADUs. And so to me, it feels, um, it feels like the, the right path forward to both, uh, comply with state law and then have the, uh, ability, the local control to. To be able to, um, um, implement this in a way, you know, I, I would hope, um, that we would be doing it in a way that still honored, um, the character of the village. I think there's opportunity for that, so I want to, um, alleviate some concerns that it, um, I mean, certainly it could, it, it could impact the villages if we're not thoughtful about it, but I think there's a lot of commitment to, uh, preserving character and, um, having, having more housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and just for the record, if we can close, public comment. Sorry, no, it was me. And. Councilmember Guthrie?
So, um, I, I think I'll start with sort of pushing back on the whole neighborhood character thing. I, I think one of the reasons that we're, we're, we are at today is because for years we have used neighborhood character to reduce the building potential with, within our city limits. We have not seen a lot of SB nine activity here in the city. I think partly that's the residency requirement. It's also because the financing of splitting a lot and maybe tearing down a. Very expensive home, even if it's, even if it's old and, and is, is just, is, they just don't work. So we haven't seen a lot of SB nine, but I, I do, and, and I can see there, there are certainly the, the village has a lot of very small lots, and it's concerning to me that you could have fifteen hundred square foot lots with two homes on each one, in theory. Unlikely to happen, but, uh, but certainly because cities have protected certain, protected their whole city in some cases. I'm, I'm remembering Woodside declaring themselves as a, as a mountain lion sanctuary and saying therefore they, they couldn't, they, they couldn't meet the sequoia requirement. So I think that, that's why we're seeing this from the state. And I'll segue into that, that, that this is what happens when the state is trying to do one, one size fits all, because they have no, no other choice. The reason I asked about the residency requirement was because. The, the, the state was specifically trying to not have this turn into a, uh, a, a developer-driven, uh, driven option that, since you had the residency requirement, this would be a homeowner splitting a lot and creating a second home, as opposed to a developer coming in and just doing a lot split and selling off both lots. But here, for whatever reason, I'm not sure that I understand what, what the state's logic here was, they've actually made it almost impossible for us to enforce that. So, you know, we're going to have, we, we may very well have some lot splits, particularly on vacant lots, that, that will never be, uh, a resident, uh, that will never meet the residency requirement. The other comment I make here is, is that along with this, and I think this is the, one of the most concerning parts for me, is that the, and I, I know that the letter was about the ADU, but I'm going to make the comment here, that the HCD has become. Uh, just a very Kafkaesque experience for anyone to deal with, to go, it, it changes every day. Uh, you, you really don't know, you, 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 you complied with it, you use their language, and then they come in and tell you, oh, no, the language isn't, isn't right, even though you use their language. So, uh, HCD in particular, partly because they're. They've, well, I'll just call them, you know, this, this is our coastal commission. You know, they, they just make it up as they go along, it feels like, and makes it very difficult to, uh, for us to meet the requirements. And, you know, it's kind of scary when you don't, there, there are penalties for not meeting the HCD, for not having an approved housing element by the HCD. So, you know, this is kind of similar to how we've lost, we, we don't have as much control over the litigation as we like. We've lost control here. And, uh, I, I, I personally think that, that thickening up our neighborhoods is a good thing. I mean, it's, it means we don't have to build new roads. When we do a, a whole new development, like the one planned, you know, out, we, we have to, we have a whole nother set of roads to improve. We have a whole, a whole nother set of traffic issues that we need to, as opposed to if, if we had twenty-five percent more houses on the same streets and, and we, we would, yeah, we would have somewhat more traffic, but we wouldn't have to build any, build and maintain any new roads. We probably wouldn't have to build and maintain any new sewer and water systems. So there, there are distinct advantages to thickening up our neighborhoods, uh, that, that this kind of activity is, it's too bad this is the way it comes down, because we, we, we could do a better job of this ourselves, I think. But, uh. And, and I'll just finish saying, I, I think we have done the minimum requirement here that, to meet the state. We, we are not extending anything beyond what the state required. So those are my comments, certainly in favor of moving forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Marvilia?
Um, yeah, I completely agree with Councilmember Guthrie. Um, I think that it would be great if this was taken advantage of more often, a SB nine lot split. I think we have like a handful that, correct me if I'm wrong, that have happened in the last four, five years. So, um, I don't think this is going to significantly change, change things throughout the city, because we just don't. It's so hard to do. Um, I just wanted to thank our planning staff and community development for having to parse through all this and figure all this out, because even just reading this report was like hurting my brain so much of trying to figure out exactly what they were saying and what the requirements that we needed to do. So I really appreciate the work that you all have had to be putting in on all these things, especially because they are ever-changing every few months. I mean, I know how many times we've changed this ordinance, like, it's, it's pretty incredible. So thank you for all the work that you do on this.
And I would just say I join my colleagues' comments, and I would be ready to move forward.
I will move to introduce an ordinance amending sections sixteen point two zero point eight zero and sixteen point three two point zero six zero of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code regarding urban lot splits and two unit developments, and find that the ordinance, ordinance is exempt from sequoia.
I'll second. I'll call him. Thank you.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes. Thank. All right, that brings us to, thank you, everyone, brings us to ten B, which is amendments to Title sixteen regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And I'm guessing this might be Mr. Perez as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, so again, yeah, presenting the staff report for this item. And as a little background, uh. The last time the council adopted changes to the city's ADU ordinance was, um, almost a year ago, uh, December twenty twenty four, when ordinance seven thirty-three was adopted. Which was, which was done to comply with changes to state housing law last year. And we're back here again tonight, um, in response, response to changes to ADU law again, um, in order to maintain an ordinance that is compliant with state law. Specifically, we're addressing three bills that were signed into law in October. AB four sixty-two, which establishes certain circumstances in which the, um, an ADU can obtain a certificate of occupancy prior to a primary dwelling unit. AB eleven fifty-four, which amends regulations that apply to junior ADUs. And SB five forty-three, which, um, most significantly, significantly changes the number of ADUs that may be permitted on, um, an eligible parcel. And then finally, um, as Councilmember Guthrie alluded to, the city received a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development with findings from its review of our ordinance adopted last year, um, that required some minor amendments, um, for council's consideration this evening. So, beginning with Assembly Bill four sixty-two. This does allow a certificate, certificate of occupancy to be issued for an ADU prior to the primary dwelling when certain circumstances exist. Uh, those being a state of emergency had been declared for our county. In that emergency event, the primary unit on the property was either damaged or destroyed, and the ADU seeking, um, occupancy obtained all the necessary permits and passed all the necessary inspections. Moving on to AB eleven fifty-four. Uh, so currently, any property developed with a junior ADU, um, is required to be owner occupied. Um, the owner can reside in either the junior ADU or the primary dwelling. However, this bill changes the owner occupancy requirement. For JADUs and only applies when the JADU shares sanitation facilities with the primary unit. So, you know, minor change, but, um, something we need to consider as staff when we review these permits. And it also specifically prohibits the use of junior ADUs as short-term rentals. Uh, this has long been the city's stance, but now it's, uh, clearly stated in state law and. This has long been the city's stance, but now it's clearly stated in state law. Moving on to SB 543, this bill establishes that it is the interior livable space of a unit, of an ADU, that is used to determine and calculate applicable development impact fees or school fees. It also, as I said, most significantly changes the number of ADUs that may be permitted on any given lot. So in the ordinance for council's consideration this evening, there are four categories of ADUs that state statute requires the city approve if it meets certain standards, and those are listed under the class one statutorily regulated ADUs in the ordinance. So for single-family properties, categories one and two can be used in concert, which would allow up to three ADUs on a single-family property. So that an ADU can be created through the conversion of existing livable space. The property could also establish a detached ADU of up to 800 square feet. And additionally, a junior ADU can be created through the conversion of existing livable space, so for a total of four units on a single-family property. Similarly, for multifamily properties, categories three and four in the ordinance can be combined. In that scenario, a multifamily property could add at least one ADU through the conversion of non-livable space, so a garage or storage room, something similar, and a minimum of two detached ADUs. And the use of at least and minimum here are used because they're greatly determined by the number of primary units that currently exist on that property. So these are the, the bare minimums for those multifamily properties. Some other changes to note, in the letter we received from HCD, they noted that the standard in our current ordinance that says ADUs near properties are on properties near historic resources shall not be visible from the right of way was a subjective standard, which subjectivity is not allowed in the ADU review process. So in response, that standard has been removed from the ordinance. And then finally, the ordinance establishes state mandated timelines for the processing of applications for ADUs. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the council introduce an ordinance amending section 1652150 of the municipal code and find that the proposed ordinance is statutorily exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Public Resources Code, section 21080.17.
Thank you very much. Let me see if we have questions from council?
Just to cut to me here, so how does this work when, most of, most of the time, we're talking about there's an existing home and you're converting the garage or splitting off room? What would happen if you were building a new home and you wanted to build two junior ADUs into the, into it from scratch? Does the state law apply here at all?
Yes. So there are certain circumstances. Generally, in the government code language, there's use of proposed or existing with regards to single-family development. So an ADU and a single-family home can be developed simultaneously. I believe the statute says if you want to develop, create a junior ADU, that has to come through the conversion of existing livable space. So that single-family home would have to be permitted and occupied before you go through that conversion process.
So the junior ADU rule doesn't apply to a new build?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Council member Lowe? Thank you. Council member Ravea? No, none on behalf of myself. Thank you. So public comment? Anybody from the audience that wants to make a comment? Looks like that's a no. Not seen anything. So, madam clerk, can you check online, please?
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Council comments? Close public comment? Council comments?
I'll just say here that this is one where we actually have had some, some pretty good activity, the number of ADUs being built and conversions, and each of these units does in fact help relieve some of the, some of, some of the rent pressure and occupancy pressure. I think we heard from, at, at the economic forecast, a comment about how people are spreading out, that, you know, populations aren't growing even though we have units built because, you know, people who were, you know, sharing a room are now, are now moving into some of these, some of these type of units. So I think ADUs in particular, that's something I frankly advocated for, for years. Santa Barbara had a lot of ADUs that really, that was, when, when I was younger, that was the deal, was to get one of those ADUs. That was, that was the rent deal because you're, generally, your landlord is also your neighbor. So, you know, they have to face you every day. At any rate, I'm definitely in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
Council member Ravea?
I'm also in favor of this. I just wanted to kind of make a note on the, the shock, the shock clock changing on this just, it could put another burden on our community development office. I just think we need to kind of be cognizant of that. If they have to do things in a shorter time, they might have to not do other things in order to hit these. So just want to make that aware that our resources are limited, and this is the law.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm, thank you for your work, and I'd be in favor as well. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to introduce an ordinance amending section 16.52.150 of the AG municipal code and find that it's exempt from sequoia.
Second. Let me get a roll call, please.
Council member Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Council member Lowe?
Yes.
Council member Maravilla?
Yes.
Awesome. I think this brings us to the end of our agenda. So thank you all, and we're adjourned.